Good evening, welcome to the Monday, August 8th, meeting of the Mashpee Board of Selectmen. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please ask for a moment of silence, recognize the sacrifices people made on behalf of the country this past week. Before we jump into the agenda, just want to let people know, this is the second of our meetings where this has happened, but first we'll announce it where anybody interested in seeing the package of information that the board has before it's posted on the town's website, on the selectmen's page, listed under Agenda Packet. So if anybody tonight wants to follow along, if they're watching at home, or wants to look at what we see, it's available on the selectmen's website and will be on the Monday of every meeting following this one. Minutes, look for a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, July 25th, regular and executive sessions.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of Monday, July 25th, 2016, regular and executive session.
Okay, motion's made, John Cotton, second. All in favor? Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes, alrighty. Any public comment, Kathy? Alright. I think we have a 6:40 public hearing, I'm gonna hold that till 6:40, juggle the agenda around just a little bit, because I think, I want to make sure, Dino, you get enough time to run through your plan and not delay the public hearing. So maybe I can jump to old business, ask town manager for the update on the medical marijuana facility.
Real simple, they're on the verge of going for a permit, and then they're gonna be doing the site work, and then they're gonna be starting construction, and things are moving along, I believe it was already in the print media, but I did speak with those folks, and just wanted to let the board know that things are moving along, and they don't anticipate any hurdles.
Okay, so they are a little bit behind schedule?
They're a little bit behind schedule, but I don't want the board to think that they're off the radar. In fact, everything is front and center, and should be back in the town process shortly.
At what point do they start giving?
Us money?
Us money.
I don't remember.
Says before the end of this year.
This year.
That's what I thought.
And there's 20,000 this year, 40,000 next year, and 100,000 on the third year.
I fully believe they will adhere to their terms and conditions.
So there's been no suggestion that because of the delay in getting rolling, that they want to change those terms?
No.
Because I think the answer would be no. Alright, great. So they'll be breaking ground relatively soon, people gonna expect some activity on that location?
Yes, subject to the permits.
Okay, alright. That didn't take very long, so let's jump to, does anybody else have any other old business? Hearing none, let's just go right to new business, a couple of quick things. Approval for special events application for the autumn, annual autumn escape bike trek, September 23rd, the American Lung Association. This one has, this has been going on for, I think, something like 30 years. The various departments, DPW, Fire, Board of Health and Police, have all approved, and inspections have all approved without comment. And it was some thought the proponent be traveling from a long distance, and given the regularity with which we've done this, we didn't see the need to ask him to come all the way in for what was gonna be a pro forma, I thought.
I'd do approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, great. Item two is the acceptance of resignation from Sewer Commission of Mark Gurney. He's moved out of town, he's served us well on both sewer and conservation, and the next item is his resignation from the Conservation Commission. I would note, he in both of his letters, separate letters of resignation, very supportive of the work done by Tom Fidal and his role as chairman of Sewer Commission, and Andrew McManus and his role as administrator for the Conservation Agent. So make a motion, maybe we do both, accept both sewer and conservation.
I make a motion, we accept the resignation for Sewer Commission and Conservation Commission from Mark Gurney.
Second motion.
With regrets, with what is to be said.
With regrets and appreciation, yeah.
No question, I have to, I'd like to add to that, because I served on the Sewer Commission with Mark, and he was really an asset to the board, he always came well prepared, and being an engineer, he added quite a lot to the, to the board.
Yeah.
Great guy, gonna miss him.
Alright, motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, alright, great. And could we post the sewer, actually Sewer Commission's, we can appoint, we have to appoint a successor, right? I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, so if we could just get that vacancy up. We do have a candidate for conservation later on the agenda.
Advertise it.
Yeah. Look for approval of the appointment of, as an alternate representative of Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, Wayne Taylor.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
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 We have a letter of interest and a recommendation to appoint as the at-large member of the Capital Improvements Committee, Chuck Gazir.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes. And then we have a letter of interest and a recommendation for the appointment of Don Thayer to the Community Preservation Committee, not the, not the Capital Improvements Committee, it was an error on the agenda, but the packet information was correct.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, great asset.
We have a letter of interest and a recommendation to appoint Chad Smith, the vacancy on the Conservation Commission.
Is this been approved by the Conservation?
I believe it has, recommendation from ConCom.
This cons, please.
Yes. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, that's the quick new business. Let's go back to this, it's close enough to 6:40, it's 6:40 somewhere, so, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Clark, where am I here?
You are right there. If you care to open the public hearing, please.
Pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 130, Sections 57 and 60, the Mashpee Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on the application filed on July 25th, 2016, by 15, by Michael Rowanoke, 82 Sunset Circle, Mashpee, Mass. The applicant is requesting a shellfish agriculture license, shellfish grant, for a 1.4 acre site to be located in Great River, to grow oysters and possibly cohogs and bay scallops. Declimation boys will be standard 16-inch round, yellow polyurethane, anchored at the corners of the site. The applicant will, as well as plans for the licensed area, are on file at the office of the town manager and Board of Selectmen. Set hearing will be held on Monday, August 8th, 2016, at 6:40 PM, in Oakway Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road, Mashpee, Mass.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to address the application? Mr. York.
Not the applicant. Good evening.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, he is, here also.
Why don't you bring him up too?
Mike Ronhoff. And for the record, it's a 1.04 acres, 1.04, so it's just a little bit over an acre. This application was approved by myself, the Harbor Master, the Shellfish Commission, and the Waterways Commission. We look at it as a benefit to the town for economic development, and for the water quality improvement that the oysters and other shellfish that he would grow will, will have. Great River, as you know, is one of the areas that has impacted water quality, and we're required to clean it, and it's in our comprehensive plan to use shellfish in that area as much as possible. So any shellfish farms that go in will just be a help. We're planning to use cohogs, but the oyster farms will help as well. And the area that he's talking about is just an acre in the south end of Great River, just before the mouth, out of the way, it's about more than 300 feet from the navigation channel.
Are the buoys that are up there, were up there this weekend, are those, do those mark the spot?
No, the buoys that are out there now are marking one of our propagation areas, right up against the spit. This is over to the east, farther away from the sand spit, and also farther from the navigation channel.
Okay.
And the area is just muck bottom, that isn't, isn't in our plan for restoration, because the bottom is so bad. So it's a small area in there that's out of the way of navigation, and not in a shellfish area. So the other benefit that we get from these shellfish farms is that when the shellfish spawn, the baby shellfish are carried by the tides and seed other areas in town that are open for the public, and it's a public benefit. So that's the basics, and if you'd like to hear from Mike.
Anything you want to add to?
That's pretty much, in a nutshell, I mean, I wanna, I'm just looking to start small in that area, and then work my way into it, basically.
When do you plan on starting?
As soon as I possibly can, yeah.
You gonna use racks, similar to the town structure, are you gonna?
Similar to the town structure?
Similar to the way, you know, cages and?
No, what he's using is, he's planting in the sand, on the bottom with nets over it, I'll use cages.
The floating ones, here, Mike.
Some floating and some bottom cages, a mixture, because of the bottom, the way the bottom is very muddy.
Rick, you'll probably be more able to answer this. In relation to the town's own property in that area, in Calle's Beach, can you tell me the proximity to Calle's Beach?
Well, that's also, I believe, called Hurricane Beach, but you're talking about the beach that's on the Oakway Bay side of the river, so this is on the inside of the river, so the mouth of the river, there's a sand spit, and this is just inside of that.
Right.
It's not out in Oakway Bay.
But how close is it to the, to shore? I don't see any, anything that indicates the distance offshore, whether it's high tide, low tide.
It's, I believe, well, it has to be more than-
100 feet, is it 100 feet, or is it?
It's more than 25 feet, that's required by the Army Corps of Engineers, and it could be about 50 feet offshore, just, just a ballpark guess.
By high or low tide, and things like that?
Oh, the high and low tide at that area is about the same, because there's a salt marsh berm, so there's not much difference in high and low tide, it's all along the front of the marsh, mean high tide. But it's out, it's out, it's more than 50 feet from shore, and maybe as much as 100, but it gets into mucky bottom, so people can't really walk out there. It's not a public use area, because it's just bad bottom, and it's maybe three feet deep at low tide, something like that.
Will we be able to see these at all, when we're boating in and out?
He's, yes, you'd be able to see some of the floating bags, he's trying both methods of floating and bottom culture. It's limited to, to less than half of the area for floating by the Army Corps of Engineers, so.
Well, I'm in favor of aquaculture, I think it's great, and obviously it's part of our mitigation plan. I'm just concerned with, if this is the parcel that the town owns, right off the shore, right there, it seems as though we're losing the use of a lot of the beach areas, especially at low tide. I know it's only about a foot, foot deep, or even two foot deep, at best, at times. A lot of people go down there using that beach, rather than be on the ocean side, when the wind is kicking up, they'll go to this, this beach to go inside the bay.
Oh, this isn't that close to the beach, if you have the graphic.
Yes.
People that go just inside of the river, go on that sand point, and the sand stops well away from this, it's, that's, this is along the shoreline farther into the river, so there's, and it's muck, people couldn't walk out to this site at all, it's-
Shoreline's marsh grass, isn't it?
It's marsh grass with some sand along the edge, and then it gets really soft, but this, this, this proposed site isn't really, it's probably, it's more than 100 feet from that beach, and it's also out where that's, you couldn't walk, it's mucky.
Can you tell me, though, by looking at the picture, is this the town-owned land? This parcel here? I know it's hard to-
Yes, well, I believe that's-
It is the town-owned land?
Yes, the, to the, to the east of that is town-owned land.
Right.
That area that comes in, that light shaded area, that's a marsh, that's not sand. It's accepted by looking at the picture.
And there's been some discussions for alternate use, or possible use of this area, this land owned by the town in the future. Accessibility is an issue, obviously, most people that have been here know that, but that, there's possibility that may change and be corrected in the future, and that land could be, could be, you know, highly usable and valuable for the town.
What's the duration of the license, of the grant?
It's a 10-year license, and it's only, the only restriction is that you can't shellfish in this, you can navigate, swim, kayak, any, anything, and it has some, it's, it's more than 50 feet from shore, so there's room to navigate inside of this, there's a restriction-
Well, they're floaters, you just said they're floating cages.
There's, some of it's floating, only, less than half of the area, only 20,000 square feet can be floating gear, that's the limit. And there's a restriction on this grant as well, to allow dredging through the site, so the Waterways Commission puts those on these grants, if they're in any areas that they have any possible chance of wanting to dredge in the future, so.
So the Waterways didn't note any conflicts with intended uses, from their perspective?
The chairman is here, if you'd like to hear from him.
The Waterways Commission-
Identify yourself, people at home.
Ken Bates, Waterways Commission. The same stipulation that we added to Richard Cook's grant application that you folks signed is, has been recommended, and Mike has agreed, that he can work in compliance with that, and it amounts to, when we do a dredge of Great River, Little River Channel, which is every two, three, four years, he would have to, we will notify him in advance, try to give him a year's advance notification, and he would have to remove his gear during that fall period. We usually dredge in the embayments in the November, December time range, because we have to be done and out of there by January 15th. The pipe can move, will move, both by wind and current, as we're forcing sediment from the channel being dredged, and as a result, he would have to remove his equipment prior to that dredge, so that the town would not be liable for any damages caused by the pipe.
But we normally don't run tight-
Is this stipulated on our license?
Excuse me?
Is this stipulated on the license?
It was, it was on Mr. Cook's, I haven't seen the license here, so I'm not sure if it is.
It is stipulated in the application.
No, on the license.
Well, we could make it such.
I'm asking that, so do we want to do that?
Yeah, if we chose to, yeah.
And this area is not where we normally put the dredge, I do that.
Where, the only point I was trying to get is when we make our motion, we will stipulate it, that's right, I would imagine.
How many shellfish are we talking about? What's this in relative context to our plan for what you're doing? What do you think in terms of numbers?
Mike can answer that. Maximum in the future?
Yeah.
Couple million, probably.
So it's not insignificant relative to what, the size of your seeding that you're planning on doing?
It's significant.
Okay.
Right, but-
And not part of the plan, so this is all, this would, this is, this is nitrogen uptake that we were not, that we were planning on paying for elsewhere?
Right, if this is successful and sustained, we would have to do less cleanup, but we're still planning to do our part of the cleanup.
I understand, I'm just saying, it's an add-on, you're not counting on, this isn't cooked into your plan?
No.
Okay.
Let me ask you this.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have another question. I mean, where this is, this is out there, it's probably 10 years out from any change being in the other use of this property. Nothing seems to be happening quickly on this, but the potential does exist, and it's very valuable. Would you be agreeable to a relocation of the grant, if that were to happen?
If, if the town wanted to.
The lease, yeah, have you relocate, you have another relocation area. This is, like I said, it probably wouldn't be for 10 years, I mean, anyway, but-
Right, the license gets reviewed again in 10 years, right, anyway, so, yeah, I mean, there's kind of, there's some room there, and it can-
Yeah, it's, you know the parcel of land, it's a, it's a very desirable piece of land.
Right.
You know, we just don't have access because of the, the road.
Right, yeah, most of it, yeah, most of that desirable, we're well away from the pot that would be, conceived as that beach anyway, so I don't know if that would be an issue, but, yeah. You got anything else, Tom?
Any other questions? Okay, anybody on the board have any other questions? Anybody from the public here to comment on this application?
Do you want to hold off on this, and give us some time to, does anybody have any questions? Does everybody understand what this property is, potentially?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah. Why don't we, so we haven't got, let's close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the-
And then we can make a decision on whether to act tonight or not.
Second.
So, okay, motion made, seconded, close the public hearing.
Yes.
Everybody in favor?
Yes.
Tom?
Did we ask anything?
I did, I did, I was asking, thinking the same thing, I was, I was looking out there. I'll say, I'll say yes, on the conditions that were mentioned.
Just to close the hearing.
Just to close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay, yes, close the public hearing, fine.
Yeah, okay, alright, so the hearing's closed.
Yep.
Now we can talk about what's the pleasure of the board on this one.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant the application with the stipulations as noted that the water commission has asked for.
So specifically, with a year's notice, he'll remove the equipment to allow for dredging?
Mm-hmm.
And you're a man, that's okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, and do you want to offer anything?
Yeah, and I'd like to, I think, I think it's in, it's within the 10 years, so in 10 years, it would be up to the selectman anyway, whether to reissue the lease, so I think that, I think that'll cover that.
Okay, alright, so motions made, are seconded?
Second.
Second? Okay, any further discussion in approving the license? Hearing none, Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And yes. Good luck, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alrighty. We have a presentation by town council regarding the impact of the recent Littlefield versus United States Department of Interior decision. We ask council to come in and just update the board from his perspective as our representative on a recent court decision, to which we were not a party.
Correct.
But interested, obviously, where some residents of the town, city of Taunton sued federal government about the land in trust determination, so with that, I'll turn it over to council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Pat Costello, town council. Good evening, members of the board. As, as we all know, back on July 28th, the United States District Court in Boston, Judge Young rendered a decision in the so-called Littlefield litigation, which as the chairman noted, was a suit commenced by multiple residents of the city of Taunton, challenging the acceptance of land into trust in Taunton, not differentiating the Taunton and the Mashpee land, so we're still in the same bailiwick, in my opinion. Nonetheless, there were eight different counts brought, challenging the Secretary of the Interior's decision. The parties to that litigation, which would be the individual plaintiffs, the United States Department of the Interior, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and Lawrence Roberts, in his official capacity as Assistant Secretary, who actually entered the decision, stipulated that count one of the complaint, which is the one that raised the issue as to whether or not the secretary had the authority, or whether or not, in particular, the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe met the definition of Indian in Section 479 of the Indian Reorganization Act, such that it could have land taken into trust, would be taken as a separate matter first, on cross-motions to summary judgment, and the other seven or eight counts of the complaint were held in abeyance. The parties did file cross-motions to summary judgment, looking for determination of law from Judge Young. The government took the position in its motion that secretary had the authority to grant the land in trust determination, based on her approach, or her application of the definition, the second definition, in, in Section 479. And the plaintiffs, the individual residents, opposed that position, indicating that, under the carcerary decision that was rendered in 2009, the Mashpee Tribe was not, in fact, a qualified quote "Indian" end quote "tribe", in order to have land accepted into trust.
So it's just clear, this has nothing to do with the tribal recognition?
That's correct.
This is simply eligibility for land in trust?
That's correct, there's no question that the Mashpee are a federally recognized tribe by virtue of the 2007 determination by the Department of the Interior. The land in trust process has been, quite frankly, an ongoing process since that time, and has undergone extensive review down in DC. Unfortunately for the tribe, just from a timing perspective, the carcerary decision was rendered by the United States Supreme Court in 2009, shortly after it was recognized as a federal Indian tribe, and it, and it did throw an entirely different light on their application for land into trust. After much further deliberation at BIA, the secretary did ultimately determine that the 150 acres, I believe, in Taunton, 70 acres here in Mashpee, were in fact lands that would go into trust, that the tribe qualified to have taken into trust, and thus became sovereign, sovereign lands under federal jurisdiction. It has a very significant ramification in terms of regulatory authority over the property, taxation, or exemption from taxation, and we have worked cooperatively with the tribe since the land has gone into trust. We had the initial inter-jurisdictional agreement that we executed back in 2008, that laid a foundation for going forward. Within that agreement, we did agree as a town to cooperate and assist in the land in trust process, such as we could, we have done that. In fact, we recently, back in December of this year, or early January, executed a final memorandum of understanding relative to, in effect, mutual aid, provision of fire, law enforcement, and EMS services with respect to these federal or tribal properties. And to my understanding, that, that agreement has, has worked fine, there haven't been any real issues with regard to it. This decision, however, does have the potential to change the respective relationships between the town and the tribe. And I say the potential, because undoubtedly, this decision will be appealed by the United States. When a United States District Court judge renders a decision like this on an administrative action, in my view, the, the law of the land is the judge's determination. However, the, any agrees party has a right to file an appeal to the First Circuit Court of Appeals, which I'm assuming will be done in this particular case. When the federal government is a party filing an appeal, they have 60 days within which to file the appeal, as opposed to the typical 30 days, so that would be the period, the window of appeal, period, that we'll be looking at. Now, I've, I've discussed this matter with, with special counsel down in DC, and it's an interest, very interesting situation. It's, it's an issue of first impression in many ways, in the post-carcerary era. Judge Young, in his decision, repeatedly stressed that we have to pay attention to the plain language of the statute, and interpreting the statute. In my view, paying attention to the plain language of the decision, it would appear to me that the land is not in trust at this point in time, because the basis for the judges overturning the decision, accepting the land in trust, was lack of authority in the Secretary of the Interior to take that action in the first place. Thus, where a governmental official has been determined not to have the authority to take action, typically, that would result in the underlying action being nullified and deemed void. There are some procedural twists here, however, that we should take note of. Judge Young could have vacated the decision of the Secretary of the Interior, he did not expressly do that in his decision. It's interesting to note that the plaintiffs, in their motion for summary judgment, did not submit a form of order, or did not specifically request that the underlying decision be vacated. Perhaps that's why the judge failed to include that language. But more significantly, what the judge did do is remand the matter back to the secretary for further consideration, consistent with his opinion. We can only speculate as to why that particular action was taken. It could be to allow the secretary to further review the Mashpee's application for land into trust, based upon other grounds, upon which she didn't decide in the decision last fall. It, it could be, as some would argue, for the secretary, herself, to vacate the decision that was previously rendered. It's unclear at this point in time, quite frankly, from a procedural perspective, where we stand in terms of the status of land in trust.
If the federal government were to appeal- If the federal government were to appeal, would it be reasonable to expect them to not take any additional administrative action in light of the... Light of the judge's decision, to wait and see whether the appellate court upholds or overturns him?
That would... Absolutely. I think that would be a fair expectation, Andy. And furthermore, I think that, in conjunction with such an appeal, it's entirely likely that the government may also file some motions with the US District Court or the First Circuit Court of Appeals, seeking clarification as to the application of the decision to the status quo. Parties can seek injunctions from an appeals court or the US District Court in a situation like this, to maintain the status quo pending final determination by the appellate courts. In this case, we have the First Circuit Court of Appeals and then the United States Supreme Court. There would be the two appellate courts that would have an opportunity, perhaps, to weigh in on this decision. My suggestion, and this is, again, based on consultations I've had with special counsel on the matter, is that we sit tight for the time being. Let's maintain full readiness to respond, as may be needed, to events that may occur on tribal properties. We should cooperate and fulfill our obligations in the protocols set forth in the memorandum of understanding as fully as possible. We can only hope that the appeal here will be expedited. It has been... This decision in the District Court was issued specifically, as it was, in order to expedite an appeal on this legal issue, to get to the bottom of the legal status of the lands in trust as quickly as possible. So I certainly think that we should continue to engage in a direct dialogue with tribal public safety officials. Nonetheless, I think Mashpee police, firefighters, and EMS responders should be made fully aware that there may be a need for them to respond in the event that some determination comes down the pike, hopefully sooner rather than later, from one of the courts, clarifying whether or not the land in trust status remains in place pending the appeal. As I noted earlier, the basis for Judge Young's decision, i.e. lack of authority to render the determination, in most scenarios, would void and nullify the action taken, no questions asked. This is a very complex situation here, however, where certain rights have been assumed, certain commitments made, certain contracts entered into by the tribe and others, based upon the land in trust designation. I do believe that it would be incumbent, not only on the United States government, but on, you know, for us and the city of Taunton as well, to, you know, take reasonable steps to make sure we know what the status of the law is. I do think if we chose to, we could file a motion to intervene in the present action. I don't recommend that at this point in time, because I do believe that the United States government will be... Is, right now, taking that... These issues into account as part of its strategy in going forward. And we have contacted counsel at the US Attorney's Office, trying to get some input. We haven't heard anything back to date. They're probably still formulating their strategy in this regard. I have had communications with counsel for the tribe. I understand what the tribe's position is on the land in trust status right now. But I suggest that we just maintain the status quo, continue to work with the tribe, but at the same time, have our responders ready and available to respond to any incidents on tribal property, should that need arise.
My concern, I guess, on the responder is, you know, hypothetically, were there to be any sort of delay, even if we got permission?
Mm-hmm.
And someone were injured or suffered beyond what they would have had... Their response been immediate, and we were to get litigated against, and plaintiff injured party might make the case, "Why'd you wait? Land in trust wasn't applicable." And that would open up some liability to the town associated with any delay, since we'd likely be the deepest pocket in the discussion. So I'd, you know, I understand the need and the value of maintaining the open lines of communication, but I'd be hesitant to see us engage in any delay in responding. I think we should respond to incidents on tribal council land the same way we would on any other land within the bounds of Mashpee, unless we're enjoined by the courts not to.
Are you suggesting that we no longer go by the MOU that we have?
I think we let them know we're coming, but I... I'm just... I'm concerned that...
You're saying is null and void, the past?
I'm not saying it's null and void, but I'm just saying, if we get called on to... We get a call for first response, I think we ought to go.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, that was a point, as the town manager will recall, that was very hotly contested down the final negotiations of the MOA. And the language we agreed to basically provided that the town will notify the tribe of its intentions to go onto tribal properties, and if a response from the tribe or assent to enter was not forthcoming in a prompt fashion, we have the inferred right to go onto the property in any event. So I would suggest that by abiding by that protocol, we would be able to enter property and take action.
I would define prompt as almost immediate in this instance.
I have to agree. I... My thought is, respond to the emergency, whatever the case it may be, as you would any other town member, and then, at the same time, notify them, but as a courtesy, but...
Again, I'm asking a question where are we saying that we are going to null and void our MOU that was already signed with them?
No, I would say that. We're taking... I would... No, I'm not. I'm saying... What I'm saying is, we ought to use the language that exists in the MOU, that a prompt response is, we call, we either get... We get, you know, an immediate response, that we can go on, or we take the inability to...
But that is our agreement, isn't it?
That is. I'm saying... All I'm saying is that I think, you know, we should live within the bounds of the agreement, but we should be clear to anybody involved that a prompt response is, you call tribal police, which is our protocol, and they say, "Yeah, go ahead, and if we don't get ahold of them..." We tried.
That's the MOU.
We tried. We didn't get a prompt response, and we're going.
That is the MOU.
It's immediate response.
Immediate response.
With no delay.
That is the MOU. Right. That is currently a...
But I think it's worth making notice, so that in the event, a future litigant, they can go back to this meeting, and they can hear that the town's intention was to respond immediately, and the response they got was consistent with that, so that we don't get...
Without delay.
We don't end up being sued for delaying and causing subsequent injuries.
I have a question for you, similar, but a little bit different. It happened to me, where I was driving through the Mashpee Rotary, and the Mashpee Wampanoag Police blew through the road. I pulled it with the sirens blaring and the lights flashing, and they were going to one of their other parcels of land. They're not all concentrated on the government center. How does that affect the police and their ability to use their vehicle and to respond to another call?
They... Yeah, they have the right, obviously, to...
You know, so...
Yeah, yeah. They would have the right to...
They would.
To travel between and among the parcels of land that are in trust. That's inferred as within their jurisdiction.
Ted, I just have one... Not being legal or anything else, but would it be behooving to us as a town, just to write a simple letter to the Secretary of the Interior, tell him of the dilemma we're facing right now? Could you please advise us as to how you feel about it?
I think that's a good idea.
It's a real...
I like that.
We could... We'd certainly do that.
I would... If I could.
Go ahead.
Right.
You're on.
Right. I would also recommend that we file a letter, chair to chair, about this concern.
I agree.
I think we can. I guess the court's in the driver's seat at the moment. So we've got two interested... We're talking about sending letters to two interested parties on opposite ends, actually on the same end.
Same end.
On the same end...
And we just want clarity.
Right.
Of this litigation. But neither... You know, what I would expect is, they're going to repeat the assertion they're making that... Or that the BIA made in its defense in the suit, that they had authority, and in their opinion, they're... That the judge aired, and nothing's changed. And I don't know... We can ask the question... I'm not sure what the probative value of getting...
From...
From getting... From getting the Bureau of Indian Affairs to tell us that they stand behind the position they took in court. What are we supposed to do with that?
It can't hurt. They will be in litigation mode, clearly, so they're going to circumspect...
They're not going to say anything, other than... They're not going to say anything to weaken their appeal.
No. I mean, we haven't heard back from them yet, after a couple of calls, so I don't know that things are going to change in that regard, but I do think it shows the earnestness of the town and the legitimate concern it has, just for maintaining public safety.
That's what I'm saying.
Is there a way to require of the court without intervening?
Now, a court will not comment on matters or clarifications on litigation unless you're a party. And I do believe... I do feel quite strongly... This is an unusual situation, as I said before. It's sort of a first-time occurrence under the current statutory scheme. I do have a strong feeling that some form of motion will be filed, either prior to or in conjunction with an appeal, to help clarify the status of the lands in trust.
Can one... Could we intervene solely for the sake of obtaining clarity and not taking a position on the judge's ruling?
We could. If we establish that we have an interest in the outcome of the court's decision, we could intervene. I would suggest, however, that, rather taking that extraordinary step at this point in time, in light of the anticipation that such a motion will be filed by the current parties to the suit at some point, and hopefully...
Does that 60-day extended window for the feds extend to us, the interested parties? Or are we...
No. I mean, you can file a motion to intervene at any time, as long as it's not undue delay, and we're well within that.
We're on a 60-day clock.
No, no.
And I would just suggest...
I would be so, so totally against intervening into the case and getting into this one.
I'm not suggesting we make a decision on that tonight.
I would just suggest that it be their billable hours rather than ours.
All right, so the suggestion's been made that we have...
No disrespect.
Don't worry about him. He's Washington counsel. So the suggestion's been made that we send two letters, one to BIA and one to tribal council.
Chairman.
Chairman and chairman. Everybody amendable to those? I think we need to...
To the chairman, it's going to be a letter saying that we're going to respond immediately without delay?
Following up on... And I'm assuming, following up on our policy, we've always made, any discussion we're going to have goes chairman to chairman.
Correct.
And let it go from there.
Right.
I think it's important that we do open a dialogue right now. We should... I don't know where the tribe stands and what they need from us, if anything, and what we can do to help them during this time. I mean, if they need our help. But as you pointed out earlier, and sometimes when we have the long conversation, so right now, as it stands, they... While they're still... Wampanoag is still a recognized tribe, the land is not in trust, not in trust, and no longer are they a sovereign nation with land. Is that correct?
I think this is a compelling argument to that effect. I also think that the government, and I'm sure the tribe, are looking at procedural aspects of Judge Young's decision to determine whether he withheld pulling the final trigger and by remanding it back to the secretary. I would suggest we do exactly as has been discussed and follow the protocol to the extent we should under the MOA.
Mr. Manager, since you control the purse strings on this time, can we ask the council draft?
Yes.
Provide a draft of that letter for my secretary?
Yep.
Absolutely.
All right. I imagine we'll be discussing this again, because I think, unless the board has any other questions, we'll move on to the next item.
I'm good.
But I think it was very helpful to have you come in and explain this to us.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to see you.
See you, sir.
All right. Seven ten. Mr. McManus is here to discuss a proposed memorial site location... Or location for a memorial to former Conservation Department employee Diana Lund, who passed away last year, right? Yes.
I don't have PowerPoint tonight, so I have visuals. Thank you. Drew McManus, Conservation Agent for the town of Mashpee. And what you have before you is a request for the use of town-owned property, specifically John's Pond Public Beach Parking Lot, for the establishment of a memorial for a former town employee, Diana Lund. She was the secretary to the Conservation Department and Conservation Commission for a number of years. I didn't know Diana personally, but Michael Talbot is here with me. He's part of this project. He can speak to Diana's history with the town and with the commission. He was on the commission at the same time that she was secretary, and he's also involved in part of the design scheme that we have in mind for this location. So we have on the top page a map. This is the plan of record for when that parking lot was revamped, and just the highlighted area shows you the approximate location we have in mind for a memorial for Diana. The memorial details, essentially just an overview, and Michael will give more details, but it's an engraved boulder surrounded by native landscaping. We looked at several different locations. First of all, the reason we chose John's Pond is because it was a favorite place of Diana's. It was her favorite conservation area, an area she frequented quite a bit. And working with former agent Bob Sherman, who spent the most time with Diane as coworkers here at Town Hall, he had made it known that this would be somewhere in John's Pond Conservation Area would be an ideal location. So John's Pond Conservation Area as a whole is a very large parcel. It's over 300 acres in size. There's certainly any number of places that a memorial could go. However, the reason that I had suggested the parking lot area is that it's a more visible area. It's where the public frequents. I don't want to choose a location that's remote and leave it open to vandalism or other potential issues, so to go through all the work to establish it. That's too much of a risk, in my opinion, to use some of the more remote areas in the parcel. So the second page just kind of highlights, it's one of these grassy islands in the middle of the paved parking area, just inside the main entrance. The bottom picture on the second page just kind of highlights the area on that grassy patch where we'd like to establish the memorial. The highlighted arrow shows a second option, which is on the wooded bluff on your right side when you're entering the parking lot, where there's a picnic area. And the last page just kind of highlights that second option, to give you more of a visual. So with that overview, I'll turn it over to Michael.
And before you go, I just have two quick questions.
Sure.
Number one, has the Conservation Commission been approached with this, and are they in agreement with it?
They have, and they are.
Am I correct? Actually, this land, it's up to them what to do, right?
Well, this is actually town-owned property, so it's under your...
It's not in conservation.
It is not in conservation, but it's surrounded by John's Pond Conservation.
Okay. Second question, how is it being funded?
Private donations. Solicited private donations.
Thank you. That's all I wanted.
Good answers.
For the record, my name is Michael Talbot. I'm chairman of the Environmental Oversight Committee, and at the time that Diana was here, for part of the time she was here, I was on the Conservation Commission, serving as both commissioner and as vice chair for a number of years. The person who really helped to initiate this was Bob Sherman, who was Conservation Agent for many years in town, and was one of the most innovative and important conservation agents in the Commonwealth. He pioneered the concept of a local wetland by law and established one for Mashpee and developed one during the time he was here. During that time, the commission was a very busy place, and Diana was a critical part of the successful functioning of that office. She was also much beloved and a really wonderful person to work with. So for those of us who knew Diana and worked with her, this seems like a very fitting, you know, memorial. And again, the site, as Andrew said, that was chosen, was one that was just an open weedy area in the parking lot there. And below that, in the photo I gave you, is a photograph of a memorial we did on conservation land a couple of years ago. This is at Mashpee Woodlands. This was a memorial the Mashpee Environmental Coalition did for Ed Baker, in recognition for his years of service to the town and to its environment. So what we are proposing is something here with a... Something of a similar memorial stone, a planting, which our company is actually going to design, you know, as a gift to the project itself. There'll be just low grassland, shrubland, heathland, native planting. It'll be a pollinator garden in many ways, like the ones that we established in other parts of town as the demonstration project to promote ecological landscaping, and the... And the boulder will be incorporated in that. So we, the, the intention is to create kind of a low planting that will still allow good visibility, but at the same time will have a four-season impact on that site in an area that's, that's pretty open. So we consider it not just to be a memorial, but kind of an extension of the work that the town has been doing to promote ecological landscaping.
Do we plow this in the winter?
I don't think so, not to my recollection.
Okay. I just, the only concern was for the snow piles would, would affect the plantings that you're putting down.
The grassland plantings in particular are very tolerant of snow plowing because they are herbaceous. You know, they, they die back in the wintertime.
You're not doing any woody shrubs?
There will be some in the center there, there'll probably be some low ink barriers, a few other native shrubs in there, just to sort of add a little bit of structure and winter interest there. But those are plants that are often used on the edge of roadways and in plow areas and-
I had the pleasure of serving the board while she was still alive and know what an asset she was from the town. I think it's a great idea, very much.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, it was also my first go around on the board. Diana was with the Conservation Commission, she was great. So, very fitting, appropriate.
Do you need a motion?
I do.
I make a motion to propose a memorial site for the former conservation department employee, Diana Lund.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you both for bringing this to us.
We'll let everybody know, there will be, her family will come out when this is completed. We'll let everybody know.
What's the timing?
We're looking at, hopefully, if everything goes according to plan-
Might even be able to get something in this, this fall or-
By this fall.
By this September.
Yeah.
And by the way, the Environmental Oversight Committee, by email, except for Andrew, of course, who was maintaining his role as chairman and remain neutral, voted in favor of this as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go back to old business, having completed our appointments and hearings. Mr. McCarthas has asked to come in, present his remediation plan for the outdoor entertainment noise complaints. So we've, he's given us a written plan, as he was requested to do, so we all have had a chance to review it. And I'm going to give you the opportunity to present as you'd like. I do want to stress to everybody, this isn't a public hearing. This isn't a public hearing on a license modification. It's not a testimony setup. We haven't been requested to change what's before us, what's currently under the terms of the license. And I would also caution that any comment, pro, con, that you might hear from us, Mr. McCarthas, shouldn't be seen as a endorsement that's going to be binding on a future, or the death knell for a future license application. We're really here tonight to just hear what you're intended to do, so your neighbors can hear what you've intended to do. And should you, at some point, decide to come in, file a license application, we'll hold the full public hearing, people will comment, we'll comment, we'll have a discussion. But I, I just, I want to make sure that people on either side of the issue don't take anything any of us have to say in reaction to this, as signaling, oh, you made a commitment to, you liked what he's going to do, you made a commitment, you're going to give him a license app. Or we didn't like what he was going to do, he's got no shot at getting a license application. So those are the ground rules that I want to establish, just for fairness to everybody. And, and I will ask you to run us through as best you can what you're intending to do.
Good evening, everyone, and chairman of select people, selectmen. Again, Daniel McCarthas for the record. We, I, this was also in response to the boards a couple of meetings ago, saying that, you know, trying to work diligently through to get some sort of plan together, being in the summer season, being that, as we had said before, that, you know, a lot of this stuff's already pre-booked for the summer. You know, we'd made plans, our employees were hired, everything, this whole plan was put together three or four months ago for the summer entertainment and everything else. Subsequently, you know, we're trying to work as fast as we can, come up with a plan that is financially possible, as well as, you know, we feel is going to mitigate and fix the situation. As the chair had noted that, I'm sure you've all read through your, the application I put in, or actually the information I put into you, I don't know if I have to read through everything per se, but I-
No, just highlight what you think you, you want everybody to know what you're planning on doing.
Highlight here was, you know, and I had also Tony Pizzo was here tonight, had more than I have any questions, you know, for qualifications. Basically, we're going to-
You stay on the mic so people can hear. Are you going to give him the mic? Great, thank you.
Don't give me the mic. The, um-
The only mic you get to use for now.
Yeah. The, the whole, you know, premise of this plan here was to control the noise, as the state of modifications, a noise control, you know, to keep the noise on, obviously, in the area of the deck and not to intrude upon my neighbors anywhere else. I think, all summer, I think for the last few weeks, I've done a good job of controlling what was going on out there. We had some cancellations, we suffered some financial issues, you know, obviously we had to pay bands, or we had to cancel everything else. But in the spirit of moving forward and, you know, being good neighbors and, and getting along with everybody, we've come up with this plan through Tony Pizzo and his resume and everything that's here. He's done extensive work with sound places. And basically what it comes down to is that, and the first step is providing what is called the house PA system. So we control now the volume. As before, we had issues, as, as Slick McAllen had a nightclub in previous years, you know, the bands sometimes do whatever they want. I have fired two bands, I had changed bands, I've done the best case, controlled what was happening. But now this is an added step where basically is this two speakers, two main speakers, directionally into this area here with two monitors, which goes back to-
Where's the street?
The street's right here, this is 151.
That's 151?
Yeah, that's 151 here, that's the area, this is the other building, and the neighbors are right back here, just back here. So basically what this does is, the speakers are specific, special speakers that, most speakers kind of spray them, spray the sound. These speakers are going in, are directional, to keep the motion, keep the direction to speak the sound in a specific area. Also, we've also included the acoustic panels, so when this shoots this way, it's hitting panels, it's not just bouncing everywhere and everything else. So installation of acoustic panels here, so when the sound goes that way, it kind of deadens in this area here. Also, we also created, what's this, an MVL barrier along the railing here. This is a soundproofing, and it's in, in the packet here, it has been purchased already. It's basically used on oil rigs, you know, on, on the thing, to deaden the sound in area. So we'd be railing, putting along the rail here to, to deaden all the sound where the band usually plays in this area right here. Also, the installation of what we call the DBX, what we had mentioned in the paperwork is, the bands basically plug into our system, we control the sound, it's basically a governor, you know, for lack of a better term. So when it's preset at a level, then if they exceed that level, then it shuts down.
The entire system?
What's that?
The entire system shuts down?
Yeah, the sound system shuts down, yeah. The sound system shuts down. There's steps in the thing, and then it shuts off for five to 10 minutes. And then if it happens again, then the next time it stops for 20 minutes or something, you know. So we have control now of the total volume and the direction of the, of the, the sound where it goes. So the bands will, won't be bringing, all they bring in is their mixer, all the sound comes through our system now and everything else. And that, you know, hopefully, you know, according to Tony, it's probably the best, best case scenario is, how to handle this situation is to control the sound, because it's, it's really, it's a noise control situation. It's difficult to control noise and, and then the, the shape of the buildings and atmospheric, I mean, there's a lot of issues. If this doesn't, if needed, Mr. Pizzo has designed this kind of configuration for a sound barrier, fence barrier here for sound. Again, to be lined, this would probably be an eight-foot-high fence to start with about 12 feet here and four, and then kind of a jog this way to keep the sound, you know, coming in this way. So did you replace with the same MVL barrier, which basically absorbs the sound and keeps it in the area. So it stops it from really from bouncing everywhere, it just kind of sucks it in.
Sound deadening.
Yeah, and it just keeps it going like that. I think, and according, you know, to, obviously, the letters and what statement from Mr. Pizzo says, that this should be sufficient to control the sound and be able to, you know, go back to, you know, having our entertainment license as-
Could I ask you to engineer a couple of questions?
Sure, absolutely.
Could you come up, please?
I've been through this 30 years ago.
Would you mind just introducing yourself for the record, please?
My name's Anthony Pizzo. I own a local company that I deal with electronics and engineering, electronics engineering, basically using modern technology to solve problems for various people for various circumstances, and I've also been doing professional sound engineering. As an independent contractor, getting paid for it since I was about 15 years old, I've dealt with small venues, clubs, theaters, House of Blues venues, outdoor venues, Live Nation venues, lots of sorts of stuff.
You know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
On the system here, band comes in, the average band, let's say a three-piece band, all their equipment is placed into your sound system or what Dino's paying for?
Basically, any sound whatsoever that's going to come out of the speakers that are installed has to run through a processing unit, which also has a microphone that's permanently attached inside the building, and it automatically adjusts-
I had my own house systems way back, and the first thing a band I ever had come in, and I had many fights with them, is all of a sudden they're plugging their own amplifiers into that system. Well, that, is that a case of the house is going to have to control it, or is it a case, can they do it?
No, well, the unit's called a DBX Drive Rack 360, which is the newest unit they have out. The Drive Rack's been out for probably 10 to 15 years, and it's the closest equivalent you can possibly get of a computerized sound guy. So, yeah, everything, anything that, any amplified noise-
The band cannot dictate to it, it dictates to the band what they-
No, well, for one thing, the unit will be in a separate room, in the back room, where, you know, already has like his current music system and everything. And on top of that, the system, both the power amps and the DBX Drive Rack, which everything runs through, is also digitally locked. You need a pass current-
For example, I have a small portable piano. The only thing that that thing's going to be able to do is plug into your system.
Right. And they can't, no matter how much they turn their volume knob up-
Same with the bass guitar, same with the lead guitar, all of that.
Right. Anything that is amplified that would come through the system.
The only thing you're contending with is the drummer, and I don't think I've ever seen a drummer in one of the bands.
Right. Well, and that's the point, also the purpose of the, the MLV, which is mass-loaded vinyl, I don't know if anyone's familiar with that, but the purpose of the MLV, like, both along the railing and also if we end up needing to do a fence, is it blocks down on the, the actual acoustic noise just created by, you know, any instrument, whether it's a drum and acoustic guitar, somebody yelling, whatever it is, it basically cuts down the natural noise coming out before it gets amplified. As far as things that are amplified, it won't be an issue with the Drive Rack.
I actually had them 30 years ago, of course. I had payphones in the place 30 years ago.
And then also, it actually, one thing that's kind of important is, one thing that's kind of important with the Drive Rack too, to note, I guess, is that not only does it control the volume, it also controls the EQ curve of the entire system. So you have certain frequencies, like bass and whatnot, that'll travel through things and farther, and you can actually limit the volume of those independent frequencies. So if somebody, you know, tries to put an instrument through it and crank one particular frequency, that happens to be a problem with it traveling to other neighborhoods and stuff, that, the DBX 360 will actually limit that frequency as well. So it's-
So as you said, it's somewhat like a governor, like you said, of sound, sound governor.
Absolutely, yeah. Literally, once it's programmed, you can't, there's no way to push it beyond that volume without reprogramming it.
I have a question now to ask my, my board and you, is where you have taken, with this, how would you test this without buying it?
Right.
You can't really.
So we're making the investment for a lot of money.
Yeah, like the plunge.
It's in, it's in front, that's just the sound right there. That's to show that, obviously, we, it's already in order, it's already, it's coming in.
Are there systems in the state that you could go in here and see if they do work? I don't want, what I'm talking about, Dino, I don't want to see you go and spend whatever it might cost.
It depends on how local you want to get, if you feel like taking a ride to Gillette's.
Have you ever seen one work?
Yes.
Okay.
I saw one two weeks ago to Gillette's.
So you get a pretty good idea that it does work.
Yeah, I mean, this is the same type of system that they use, and the same type of, also, not just the, the PA system itself, but also the type of sound treatments, the type of barriers, the type of fencing, is the same stuff they would use at any outdoor venue, like Tweeter Center or that stadium. They use the same stuff at the Melody Tent. I actually am good friends with Eric Group, who is the current manager of the Melody Tent, and he took over for the guy who basically solved all their sound issues, because about 10, 15 years ago, I don't know if you recall, they had issues with neighbors and whatnot, and they haven't had-
I do recall.
What's that?
I do recall, yes.
And, and they-
It was in the paper for-
And I was asking him about it, actually, and he said that they have not had any issues in, basically since he's been the manager there, which is the last few years. So a lot of the stuff we're doing is similar to what they have set up at the Melody Tent. And one of the main things that they did to control the sound, in addition to putting up some sound barriers and things like that, was they had a company come in and build a custom sound system for the Melody Tent that does sort of the same type of thing, which it limits the sound. And the DBX Drive Rack is basically like the industry standard for what it does as far as limiting EQ, limiting volume, and the fact that it, the real-time RTA mic, which is real-time audio analyzer mic, is like a pretty, probably in the last five to 10 years has come like a long way, where it's basically a set of ears listening constantly in the room from a fixed point and adjusting the system constantly in real time.
If a woman came in for a public hearing, I would make the suggestion that you bring in some testimonials from some places that said it's work.
Is it the actual performance, though, somewhat site-specific, in terms of how that sound travels at that particular location? I mean, you've got the governor on, and I don't doubt that that works, how it applies and how you might need to tweak it is really a function of unique physical layout of this particular location.
Well, it, I'm sorry.
You know, I mean, it's-
Yeah, I mean, the, the way the sound travels and whatnot is going to be, and especially in an outdoor setting or whatever, it's definitely site-specific, but the, that's what the purpose of, not only the, the way the speakers are aimed, the speaker selection that I chose, as well as the acoustic dampening panels will make, are basically the solution to that. Where those panels go on the wall and whatnot will depend on, once they install the system, go around and test it with pink noise and everything, find the problem areas where there's sound reflecting, and basically put up panels in those areas.
How do you test?
The panels?
Performance, I mean, how do you-
I mean, the best way to test, the initial programming of it and everything is you use pink noise, which is, you know, basically static, going through the PA, once the PA speakers are fixed at the position they'll be in, you go around with the, like the microphone I was talking about, the RTA mic, and you find the loudest spots in the room, you find out what spots in the room have different frequencies and reflect them. And there's also a specific test for like reverb and whatnot. You basically find anywhere that the sound is reflecting, or any spots that are amplifying different frequencies and whatnot, and those are the spots that you treat with the-
So you can tune it to your best professional judgment without having a live band there?
Initially, yes, but once that's done, I mean, you do have to have-
Fine-tuned.
Bands play through it, and it has to be fine-tuned, and that has to be with, you know, I can't just, if he has, if it was for one band that was going to play there, the same band every night, then, yeah, I could, but for the most part, you'd have to have a few different acts. And, you know, I told Dino I'd follow up by going, when he does have entertainment there outside again, then I'll go and tweak the system and whatnot to where it needs to be. I mean, the initial programming of it and everything, though, with the pink noise will, you know, set the limits of what it can push out. But as far as like the acoustical treatments and some of the stuff, like the sound barrier, really don't know for sure. Basically, tuning it does require, you know, the actual-
Live action.
Live action.
John, you have a question?
He answered it. Does it vary with each band? So actually, you'd need a technician there, too.
Right. It's basically, it's an app-
For the first week, the first night.
It does raise some issues, and I'm not sure we're in a position to solve it tonight, about what the appropriate protocol is going to be, given-
Yes.
The license you have, the ability to test.
Right.
And not, not being a violation of the license. So we're, you know, and I don't know what, you know, I don't know what our ability is to do that.
Right. If my, I was going to suggest at the same time is that we're just going to have to put[1760.91] Right, if my, I was going to suggest at the same time is that we're just going to have to put a band out there at some point to tell everybody, let's have a test, but let's put one of the bands out there. It doesn't have to be at night, it could be in the afternoon or something like that, whatever else gives us the opportunity to test it. I'm showing, and my effort to the, to the board and to the town is that I'm spending the money to show that, you know, you know, we're serious about this and to fix the situation and to be, you know, have the sound, you know, controlled, you know, so we can have.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, talking out loud, whether this is an appropriate thing for a one-day license at some point in the future. Once it's installed, once you've done your pink noise testing, once we're past the season, the ability to do a shakeout and see what. So everybody, everybody wants to see how it's performing, can be where they want to be when it's being tested. Whatever it might be.
I think the neighborhood would want it more than any.
I agree, but I just, I think that's something, you know, we need to think about procedurally because, you know, we don't want to, you know, you have the license you have and I don't want to ask you to do something and we then hit you with an enforcement action because you violated your license. But these are questions that we'd need to answer in a way that would provide some assurance and real-world experience with people that were impacted and you, so that it might inform any future decision we might make.
That would be at the public hearing, I'm guessing, but, I mean, obviously you have the conference and your engineer, sound engineer here, he's confident that he can control the noise level from outside of your parking lot area, let's say. And you, like you said, you're invested into this, so you've chosen to move forward. I hope that it works for you and we'll see what happens at the public hearing. And like you said, like Andrew says, if it requires a, you know, maybe a one-day testing, I don't know how else you could do it, you know?
You know, time being of the essence for the summer, I wonder if the board wouldn't consider at some point, given a one day or one afternoon, a one-hour license before the public hearing, so we know what we have. Don't like that, huh?
Boy, that's setting a very dangerous precedent.
Okay, I'm just throwing out, my business end of it is coming out now.
That was one of my intentions, it was come two weeks ago, was asking how would you proceed to do this, you know, and I have the confidence in Tony's, you know, ability to do this or spend the money and understand that, you know, to be proactive, you know, it's more proactive to spend the money on equipment that's going to enhance the situation a little bit better and spend money on, you know, fights and everything.
I mean, the procedural issues are as they've always been, which is, you know, we are legally required by state law to provide a ten-day public notice for license modification, which for our purposes means that if you start, use any night, one of, use tonight as our day one. We need an application in by Wednesday to get to the newspaper for Friday publication in order to be able to hold a meeting at our next, a hearing at our next meeting. And, which is the twenty-fifth?
Second.
Second, okay. So, under any circumstance, that's as fast as this could conceivably happen. But again, you know, in terms of, you know, you'd have to make a judgment about the, how the public hearing may go prior to installation. So, and testing. So that, you know, the timing of that's entirely your call. We just, you know, two Wednesdays before the meeting, you want us to hear it, we need to have an application in so we can post it in the paper.
Well, that's right, even two weeks ago, I was trying to get to that conversation two weeks ago to get to.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to rehash two weeks ago, it's not productive.
No, no, that's not trying to rehash, that was my intention, it wasn't my intention to do anything other than just update and just, you know, get some guidance, you know, which we have to take. Which we did, you know, which way to take the thing.
But we're really not in a position to give you guidance because that would prejudge a public hearing that we haven't opened. So, I, you know, I mean, I think speaking for the board is very interesting to hear the information. We appreciate your consultant coming in, providing the information. And I'm sure we'll see you again at a future date for a public hearing. And then, you know, everybody's going to be able to weigh in and I think you'll get more commentary on where we each end up on this issue at that time, when there's an actual question before us. But the information was, I think, useful to have.
Andy, does a second of Rodney had something?
Does somebody else have anything they want to add to this? Rodney, you?
I just had one quick question. When do you think is the absolute date that you'll be ready for a trial run?
As far as the PA system goes, if the FedEx tracking is correct, then I would say Friday because the, all the equipment that we ordered is supposed to be here tomorrow, by tomorrow night. Take about one day to put it in and tune it with the initial pink test, pink noise test, which would be shooting for Thursday, so.
That's all ahead.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else? Great, thank you, thank you both. All right, we will now jump back to item eight under new business, which is draft one of the October town meeting warrant. And been advised by our esteemed past chair, in the past, the practice has been, with the first draft, if there's anything here that caused you any concern, let's flag it.
That you want people in.
Yeah, that you want somebody, some department to come in and make presentation, there's additional information you want. This is a good time to flag that, or certainly prior to the next meeting on the twenty-second. When do you want to finalize this, Rodney?
When can we? We've got to finalize it, I think it's first meeting in September?
September.
The first meeting in September, it has to be.
Okay, so I think, you know, realistically, I know there's a couple of articles that are, language is still in the works, which we will have at the next meeting. So I would say if no one has anything that is of concern to them tonight, you know, if you could let the office know, let Rodney know or Wayne know, you know, by middle of next week, prior to the assemblage of the package for the meeting on the twenty-second, we can make some tweaks. There'll be a redraft of this on the twenty-second. There'll be a couple of articles you don't have right now in terms of language and maybe some other discussion that might give rise to an additional article or two. Is there anything in specific you want to touch on, flag?
There was one that I just wanted to make the board aware of that came in somewhat late, that the CIP reviewed just a few days ago. And the fire chief is here to comment on that if you did have any questions.
I mean, the brief overview is an article to upgrade our dispatch system and comply, and reporting, our tracking and reporting systems in compliance with state and county dispatch standards, using ambulance receipt funds to pay for it, you know.
That's a snapshot.
That's a snapshot. If you want to hear more, the chief's here to tell you more, if anybody's interested. But that hasn't been written yet. But we, the CIP group met and discussed it last Thursday night and.
Did they vote on it?
We did to approve it, to, for, to be recommended, but because it came in late, because of circumstances beyond the chief's control, it would have to be an article sponsored by us.
How much of an upgrade do we need to do?
Chief, you want to?
It's really, it's the software for both the reporting for the EMS calls and for the fire calls. Currently, we're using two separate systems now. Under this, we would go to one system. And that system is the base system the state uses for their medical calling. It gets kind of long, I think it's fairly well documented in here, but one of, we came up against this, the deputy and I found out about it just by circumstance. We had no idea that these systems were going to have to be upgraded anyways. So, in order to do that, we have been trying to research how to do this down the road, but now all of a sudden we've been pinched.
Just why is this a system for, you mean, your communication system or?
No, this is the reporting software that we have to use, we're mandated to use for the medical calls. So that we do the medical calls, the reports on the ambulance.
Interfaces with billing too.
So the interface is with a billing, but it's, what you're talking about is the download that comes from the dispatch center, which we've been trying to find out what the dispatch center was going to go to for the last three and a half, four years. And they finally.
I'm talking about our dispatch.
Yes, Barnesville County Sheriff's Office, yep. So, this will download data directly into that system, which is the way it should be. But the software system, AmbiPro, that we use right now, does not report accurately the required information to the state of Massachusetts Office of Health and Safety. It does not report the data correctly. And that's how we found out that this was a problem. Because it doesn't report the data, the only solution is to go to a brand-new program. And that brand-new program, go ahead, chief. Well, I don't want to interrupt you, but I also believe, if I remember correctly, that you had indicated that there was a risk, that this system could fail. And then in addition, if I recall correctly, there were not parts or components to the old system or the current system. That's correct. If either one of these systems, either the fire reporting system or.
Your current, you're talking about.
Yeah, the systems that we're using right now.
It's an old version that's unsupported by the vendor. And so it has to be upgraded. We can upgrade to their system and still have issues with consistency with dispatch from the county, or we can buy the right system and be done with it.
Basically, they got to do it.
You got to do it.
But we did try, we did try to find some ways to do it, so.
Okay, so that's, that'll be on, that'll be on version two of this draft.
I just don't want to surprise you.
No, and maybe one or two other things. But at least it does come on ambulance receipts and we're evaluating the impact of that on future capital improvement plan by the fire department out of ambulance receipts. So, if there's no, if there ain't, I don't know, does anybody have anything that's of great concern to them? The positive here is that the hundred-pound gorilla is the windows at the school and this reflects the fact that we do have the cost sharing between the Commonwealth and the school department and the deal that, and the understanding that we asked Rodney to go forge with the, with the school department. So that's a good step forward for us.
And on the petitioned articles, it's just rotating.
Petitioned articles is what they are, so. So why don't we move this into the next draft of the twenty-second with the intention of, other than, other than something that we need for timing, we'll pretty much put it to bed, other than the formal vote at the next meeting.
Do you want a motion now to take this article and put it on as a selectment out?
Sure, why not take, take a motion? Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right, good. So we're just waiting for council to draft or don't draft that. All right. Review and approval of revisions to the Board of Selectment Policy 037, placement of temporary signs. So this was put together as a result of discussion in our last meeting, where we voted to limit the use of signs in the public right-of-way for the fundraiser for the library. And based on that action, we asked for a revised policy to reflect the substance of that decision, which was basically no more than one sign on each major roadway within the public right-of-way for a period of three days, I think three days prior, and to be taken up the day after. And that's what this policy reflects, only for those property, oh, those signs put in public right-of-way. As we witnessed this weekend, it doesn't affect signs that people get permission to put up on private roads or private property adjacent to the roadway. But this is proposed to govern what we're doing and allowing on public rights-of-way. And with that introduction, I will turn it over to Mrs. Sherman.
Well, first of all, I want to apologize to people about what they did see in town of the signs plastered all over. There was actually two that they were allowed on property. And to emphasize where the event was taking place. And there, I think at count, we counted twenty-two between being on private and public. I can't believe that they were set up where they were when they were told not to. There was two at Quiniquicit on twenty-eight, when you came over at the line. And they were there Sunday morning, they were not taken down Saturday, right after they were notified that the signs were in the wrong places. Sunday morning, I left to go to work and at seven o'clock, they were still out there. I think we need to set a guideline that when this does happen and they are told to take them down and they don't, that they'll be fined. I think we need to be a little more stricter. And second, who enforces these signs?
Okay, so I, there's a couple of things in there, maybe I'll turn it over to my manager, Colin.
First of all, as far as the duration, the proposal does say five and not three, or the original did.
The original.
Obviously, you can set it for whatever you want. Obviously, there's a distinct difference between policy versus bylaw. So if you're going to recommend a fine, we need to look at the bylaw or an amendment thereof. Whereas if you want to stay focused on the policy, which only pertains to the signs in the public property, then in essence, the consequence is the removal.
But also, doesn't it, but in the zoning, doesn't it also come into place on private property?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I think we both, we need to look at both.
We're going to do whatever you instruct us to do.
So I think the, I think the question is, you know, do we want to move forward with this policy, modify it any way the board so chooses? And/or do you want to do anything? And one of the reasons you might hold the.
I mean, if we're going to do it, let's do it. And then we need to have it enforced. We can't just come up with a policy and not have it enforced. Because right now, people know that if they put wait till seven o'clock Friday night, they can stick a sign out because it's going to come down Sunday afternoon. And then no one knows.
But the difficulty people face is nobody's really sure what the boundary of the right-of-way is.
Oh, then we're going to, we're going to have to inform them. We'll have the chamber involved to tell the businesses.
So, so I think, you know, the question comes down, do you want to have a policy on this? Do you want to say no signs? And in which case, you got to go into the bylaws and zoning and change it. And then have it enforced and have, then and only then would you have the ability to assess penalties. You don't have the ability to assess penalties for a violation of the sign policy. You can say, as this draft does, I think, that a violation will be taken into consideration in a subsequent request. So if you stick them where you're not supposed to, we'll pay attention and next time we might not do it.
There's two tonight on the inside of the Mashpee Rotary.
That we already have a policy against.
Right, we do have a policy on that, but there's two there.
But there's also questions, you also, if you, if I'm reading this correctly, it's nine square feet. So there's some banners that are on the Rotary as well.
Well, that's a permit, John.
We've done some of those through one-day licenses.
Yes, one-day license.
But again, I think the whole thing has been, to clarify all of this, it's, in my, my summation of reading this, there's a lot we don't know.
Oh, of course there is.
And I think collectively, I think it's something to investigate prior to just throwing something out there.
No question.
If we're going to make a new rule, let's be very clear as to what it is before we just rush to judgment and make a policy.
And I don't want to rush this because I've been on this for quite a long time.
What we also need to do though, this is just by the selectmen, we also have signed bylaws.
Right.
So we should be looking at both, not just one, because they both work together. And this is just for our information, if we would allow a temporary, we need to be looking at the bylaws set forth by the residents of the town in which there's no, we don't have the ability to change that. That's the, that's, we have the, it's our responsibility to enforce those laws as were recommended by the residents of the town.
I, and I do have, actually, you know, one of the things I do a hundred percent agree with you is the removal of these signs after the event. There has to be, and I kind of put some words down as far as, within twenty-four hours after the event, you know, there has to be at least a written reprimand or something. And then also a potential denial of your organizational request next time.
I think that's in there now.
You know, something with, something with teeth.
Yeah, if you look at restrictions, number three, temporary signs describing scheduled event removed within twenty-four hours after the event. And then.
But there's a penalty, that's.
Well, you can't do a penalty, unless it's a bylaw that they're violating, you can't do a penalty.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but it's just something like a reprimand or something.
Well, no, what I think would, Carol's going, this is, you know, this is like a broken recording.
It is.
I, if my memory serves me correctly, you headed up a committee and signed by law, I'm already a tear you hair up. And I know our assistant town manager was ready to kill at one point.
Yes, so what do we want to do?
But, but the only thing, getting back to what you say, and I, and I really don't have a feeling either way, we tried everything in the world on that Rotary because we were concerned for public safety, not for visual pollution or anything else. And we finally, finally came down with no signs at all, and it worked. finally came down with no signs at all, and it worked. Now, the thing is, is that we can do is just take them down. When they go up, take them down.
Who has the authority to just take them down?
If, I, I don't know, I know it used to be the DPW would take it down and put them up at the DPW building, and you could come and get them.
I think the building commissioner has actually been taking the, the signs down.
I was just going to say that it's been the building commissioner or his agent that has been taking them down.
But that's the punishment.
But they seems to be, the, the problem is the weekend, and that's, they know no one is on duty.
Well, it's gotten out of control.
It has.
And it, and it has, in the past, we have authorized the building commissioner to come in and do a Saturday drive-through and pull signs. So, we have had enforcement on the weekends in the past.
So, what I'm sensing, obviously, everybody's unhappy with the signs, nobody wants them up, do we want to adopt...
I don't want to ban them completely.
Okay, but what do, but, but other than...
Can I just have a little flexibility? Because the, the building commissioner travels a significant distance, and I haven't consulted yet with the DPW director, and she may not like me saying this, but I need some flexibility to possibly have DPW staff.
It'd be your decision, I don't think, you know, as an operational question, I don't think we care as a board.
Okay, I just want to make that clear.
I just want the sign gone.
That's your call.
I think that'd be great if it was your call.
As long as you're giving me that call, I'm fine.
Yeah, so, so, but, but let's, because there's going to be, because people are going to be unhappy when you start pulling their signs, I'd like to give some clarity to the manager from the board. What are, are we delegating to him the authority to make the determination on a case-by-case basis about what, what gets, who removes it and what gets removed?
Yes.
Are we going to say...
I wouldn't say what gets removed.
I wouldn't say that either.
What do we...
Who removes it is fine.
I've had that prior to...
So, okay, so what are we saying we don't want?
Well, I think the whole, this whole case has to be looked at a little further as far as all the rules, but right now, we do know inside the Rotary is...
That's our area policy.
That's gone, so those should be inside.
Those signs that are there now should be pulled tomorrow.
The town manager's direction to take care of whoever...
It's illegal to politic in the circle, to stand there with the sign.
You can stand there with a sign.
I didn't think you...
It's our policy.
I did.
If you're standing there with a sign...
You can't just stick a sign.
But you can't leave a sign. I didn't either. I was, I was more worried about accident than I was about...
But that's, that's the case.
I always thought it was policy.
No, you can stand there with a sign.
And then whoever the, the manager decides who, who does take care of removing will have to have the information of who can put a sign somewhere so that they like...
Okay, but if somebody comes in and wants...
And you know it's going to happen.
Somebody's coming in and wants permission to put a sign, signs up, we need some clarity about what we're going to approve. And, and the precedent we set, even though it didn't go the way we wanted it to go, was what's embodied in this policy.
Which I thought was excellent.
So, why don't, can I make a suggestion? Until we figure out the bylaws and like, can we adopt this policy as an interim?
As a temporary.
To replace what we have, and then in that designate to the manager the explicit authority to designate whoever he wants to remove signs deemed to be not in compliance with the policy.
Please.
Is that a motion from you, Carol?
That's so moved.
Okay. Do you want to break my momentum here?
Well, I just want to throw one thing at you in terms of the duration. Do you want to stick to the five-day period, or do you want to say generally five days? Because if, if it's five days, there's going to be an opportunity for somebody to come in here and say, gee, can you do this?
No.
Okay.
As written?
As written.
As written.
If you don't, because you have one person taking, putting a big sign in the Rotary now, so what, what about another one that wants to come in or a third at the same time?
I'm fine with whatever you want to do. I'm just throwing it out there.
Clarity.
I just want clarity.
I've heard that from you many a time, I listen. So, motions made to adopt this as an interim policy pending a review of a sign, the whole sign bylaw issue, do we, so, is there a second to that?
With full approval of removal.
Yes, designate, yes, designate authority by the, to the manager.
I'll second that.
Okay, motions made, any further discussion? Hearing none.
Yes.
John?
You're looking at, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Do we want to try and do something for a, for an article October?
I think that would be a good idea.
So, why don't we, let's be, because it may be...
For October.
But it may be more, can we ask that it get evaluated and we look at a potential draft?
22nd.
On the 22nd, and we, you know, we can make a no-go, go-no-go decision in September.
Don't put it through again.
No idea.
I'm just telling them to remind me.
Then, then I don't know, Wayne, it doesn't make sense because there, or else, I don't know if we all have the bylaws, the book at, at home or whatever. We need to all become familiar with the signed bylaws in the town of Mashpee. Not only is here, so one works with the other.
Yeah, well, let's try to, you know, if, let's take a run at doing something that we all agree makes sense for the October meeting. If we don't get there, we'll do it.
We'll always do it in April.
This is the proper way to do it because having a committee, too difficult.
It's too hard, right.
You could repurpose the Waste Management Committee and take this on.
Thanks.
No? All right, I'll take that as a no.
Thank you.
All right, you good?
I'm good.
All righty. Last item under new business, a review and approval of the agreement between the town of Mashpee and the Barnstable County Sheriff's Department, conditions and operating policies for the operation of a communication center for the town of Mashpee by the Barnstable County Sheriff's Office.
This is just a renew, isn't it?
We discovered...
Please do.
We discovered recently that this had expired in speaking with the deputy fire chief, because at the time, the fire chief was away, he had indicated that they were not sending out the written MOUs. When we received a little bit of clarity from the sheriff's office, he had indicated, the sheriff indicated to me personally, they will be more than happy to send it out, and he did, and it's the same language as before with the exception of a couple minor changes that are insignificant, except for the price. The price did go up significantly.
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 And what's the basis of that?
The short version is it was under, and I know he wants me to stick to the short version, the call volume used to be the formula, and now it's per capita, and we just happen to be a town that has a little bit more in population than some others.
So, they not collecting more?
They came in about a year ago and explained this whole thing to us.
Well, that I don't know about.
Am I correct, Wayne?
You know, it was a couple of years ago.
I was going to say, it's, I don't remember that.
I, I thought it had already gone into effect, and there was a big jump at the time, and at the time, they said eventually, which eventually must be two years.
Eventually is no.
So, but are they, they're not using this to make up for shortfall in their county appropriations, are they?
I can't speak for the sheriff, I'm just...
What?
Aware that there was a significant increase.
I'd ask our Assembly delegate, but she wasn't there. That's why it's important to be there during budget time, because this is the kind of thing that happens.
Right.
Right.
I can tell you that there should be one additional significant increase next year, and then it's supposed to level off a little.
Now, where does that come from?
Fire Department operating budget.
So, what's the, John, when you say substantial, what, what are we, like 30%?
Do you remember?
I don't know off the top of my head, and I don't want to misquote.
I don't want to misquote.
Why don't, why don't we continue this to...
Does this need to get executed today?
They're going to continue to provide the services, and I think, quite frankly, the bill was already paid by the fire department.
Before we sign it, can we ask for a, you know, an explanation from the sheriff?
They'll come in.
Then let, have them in. I'd like to know where, why this, you know, and if this is on track for similar.
I could, I could give you bits and pieces as I remember.
I'd like to have them hear it from them.
Yeah.
And, and I, and really, you know, because I suspect, I could be wrong, that this has to do with some of the funding trends with the county, and if the county's pulling back, are they shifting costs back to the...
I don't think it's so much that, as it is, he may have lost a couple at dispatch. And again, I don't want to misspeak, so I'd rather get the facts rather than getting into...
I had no problem with the terms of the MOU, the cost, the sticker shock was...
I'm going off the top of my head, but one of the things, I'm almost sure it had something to do with the communications to the hospitals that the county used to pay for and then didn't, and which was considerable, and the police chiefs had decided that they would rather still have that ability to be in contact with the hospitals, and I think that's part of it.
The fire chiefs.
Yes, I think that's part of what this was.
And also, keep in mind, I think a lot of this is attributed and driven by a significant upgrade that is happening to their dispatch.
At the county level, at the bottom.
Yes.
It'd be useful to know where this trend is going. Is this a one-time upgrade like we're doing with our reporting system, and then it levels off, or are we on our way up?
I think there's one more significant increase, as I recall, one more, and then it's supposed to level off.
There was, they came in, and that's why it's a good idea, have them come in. They came in, and there was a lot of discussion, and at the end of it, I know the board decided it's a very good idea to keep it because of those reasons.
So, it was already approved from the formal board, as somebody suggested, so it was already...
Yeah, at some point, but yes.
It's been at least two years.
Yeah, it was quite a while ago, that's why it's...
I remember the Jim Cummings, I think I was here.
Yes.
I just can't remember the figures.
I don't think the precise figures were probably given to you, I think they were probably estimates.
They were, and but I think at the time, we all thought this is going to be in three months, four months or whatnot. He said at the... Matter of fact, he said that we need to take a place into their new dispatch. It might be three years ago, could, could very well be.
Just a question, are we getting into the town meeting, the agenda next week, next meeting?
Yeah.
So, would we consider, I don't know how long this meeting would be expected, so we can dig into that and get that done? Would that be the following meeting? Just a thought, I don't know. It sounds like you'd say it was a lengthy conversation, so I don't know.
Maybe, why don't we look at how long we think, all the issues, we can manage the agenda accordingly.
Yeah, that's...
As we set it up so that we can...
So, if we, we bring our concerns on the, on the warrant...
The warrant's fixed, I mean, we have to do that, yeah.
But, but any concerns, we can get everybody here to have a conversation with us in, in writing or in person, I don't...
One of the things you want to do right now during the week is, is if you have a department head you want in...
Let me know.
Right, right.
Go right to them.
Yes.
Let me know.
Let him know.
I think, I think we can identify pretty quickly which ones we don't have any issues with and moving forward.
So, let's bring this...
And now we're down to just a few that need to have some conversation.
Right, I mean, obviously, the sheriff's office doesn't have a burning need to get this executed because they didn't see the need for an MOU anyway, they were just going ahead.
Right.
So, if they already got paid, they already got paid. So, why don't we, let's take this up and ask them, it's not going to prevent them from doing what they're already doing.
Right.
So, and if it's next meeting, great, if it's not till the following, fine, but I'd like to hear a conversation about the money. All right, any other new business or additional topics that anyone has that we need to address? Liaison reports?
I have something for liaison.
Yeah, I have one, the only thing is, I want to commend the police department for their affair that they had, which was a national affair. I know its number is probably all those are on it. I was just positively shocked at the support the community came up and gave to them.
Amazing, great turnout.
Carol?
CPC, at our last meeting, we finished, the community park across the street is now done, and she has turned back the rest of the money that we didn't use back, which is a nice, nice feat.
It's been well-used this summer, too.
Oh, it is, yes, no question.
Come on, Ray, it really did.
Very proud of that.
Anyone else, liaison reports?
I, the only other thing, I don't have the information on it, I got an email today from our Director of Human Services, that she has contacted everyone that she thought should be, and she will be having her first man, town manager's task force meeting shortly on opiates.
And this is going to replace...
It's not replacing.
Is it not replacing? Okay, all right, I didn't realize.
No.
Okay. This is a separate...
Go ahead, you explain it because you...
I, this is a...
Yeah, essentially, this was just identified as something that should be a priority for human services. This is not a multifaceted approach, this is a one-issue identified problem, the opiate issue, whereas Mashpee cares is more focused on a host of things. We're not trying to replace a committee or its agenda or its mission, but this is a task force that will be consisting of our paid professionals from the human services director to the police chief, et cetera, et cetera, including our health agent, and they will meet regularly, they will report to me, and I can report to you.